I'd like to call to order the Raxford City Council Work Session for Monday, January thirteenth at five P M. at Calvin Community Center. If you will please, huh? Sorry. If you will please rise as Councilman Ed Palmer gives her invocation and remain standing as retired General Jimmy Iacocca gives her pledge.
Father, we're so grateful to be in your presence. Thank you for this day, a wonderful day that you made. Thank you God for protecting our troops and comrades' way. We ask now your blessings and for our time together to give us wisdom, insight, as we conduct the business of this city in Jesus' name and glory.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Baker.
Hi, Beth.
Drosh.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Seabrooks.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
All right, we have everyone here. I'd like to just address, for those probably here watching at home, this is our council meeting. We'll probably be here for the next two months, the next four meetings. We're currently going through a little remodel of our current council room, so we'll be hosting our council meetings here at Calvin Community Center. Same times, just different location. And so if you plan on attending or in the future, just make sure you come back to Calvin. Also, just for the council members, if you all wouldn't mind speaking kind of louder than normal, our system we're trying today is the one key mic up here, and then, of course, with the speakers, we had to set one out there. But if you can just speak loud, hopefully it'll pick it up, and if not, we'll make sure that by the next meeting, we have something squared away that it'll be able to fulfill the needs. Also, on the work session agenda, I have one item change I need to change. General Iacocca is here with Beth Avery, who's gonna be talking about Knox Regional Development Alliance, and we want to make sure that we put them on. And so I'm gonna have Chance, because this is part of the financials, go first, and then I'm gonna move General Iacocca into number two, and then the rest will proceed from there. So Chance, if you wanna come up, I know you gotta get the glass coat, so.
(Inaudible) we're about six months into our current budget. Now, given my chances of explaining this, most of our budget will fall one month behind just based on payroll and payouts, but I wanted to try to give you a brief overview of where we are currently in our budget.
We did our December account cables today, so that budget report, I was hoping we did that done and done. That is a six-month budget report. This has been Friday, I only got five months of data, so it is a six-month review, and just as it would've, you all would've had it at that one section, similar format as in the past. And I've got, I'm just kind of a document that I prepared for myself, and you all need a copy of this. It's something that happened to the fact, if you'll just let me know when I national, I think we can email you, you know, this tomorrow or this, this is the summary pretty much of what's in the, you are, the document.
(Inaudible)
Right, so that's why I was, you know. So, I'll just start on revenue, and I just gotta keep this fairly brief. The budget, again, everything is based as of December, or, as far as the revenue for the general fund, we are at fifty-two point three percent. The base line, of course, being the fifty percent at six months. So we're at fifty-two point three, two and a half, two point three percent, in excess of anticipated revenues, and that equates to about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars on that two point three percent. The budget, of course, was twelve eight six hundred and nine thousand. That's what the council approved back in June, and we have received six point five nine one million as of December. The three major lineups that kind of affect the revenue of the city, I'm just gonna highlight those briefly. Property taxes, as you all know, they usually get billed in October, and because of the two percent discount and to avoid penalty, most of those taxes are received, obviously, prior to January first, and that is the case, so ninety-four percent of our property taxes have been received. And we budget about five seven million, so most of that has come in. We will be sending out the liquid tax on the season this month to those folks that have not yet paid their taxes, and many of those were mortars companies in first time, so those cases were mortars companies and estros, changed hands, so probably the ones that might be ready to go for time. Insurance, street view tax, over three million dollars, three million twenty-five thousand, and we collected fifty-two percent of that so far. Again, fifty is a base amount, so we're pretty much right where we need to be. Directly sourced, and also special application tax, because of your four million dollars, and we collected twenty-eight percent, so again, fairly close to fifty percent that we anticipated. The stormwater budget is right exactly at fifty percent of where they need to be. The printout that you have will show that the percentage is a little lower. My revenue, I think, is around thirty-five, but that is only because there are two brands. The big one of the two is the thirty-one W Happy Valley Tunnel project that's coming out, so that's, so that money was set aside in anticipated revenue, but of course, we haven't started that yet. So when you don't receive any money in the, on a large lineup, it's gonna make it look like the percentage is low, but from the true operating income for the stormwater versus the stormwater usage fees, it's right at fifty percent. So again, right where they need to be at this point. The expense side of the city, I'll just kinda touch on Eastern Department, burden, burden to gather again. The Blue's Department is at forty-eight point two percent, which is about one point eight percent under budget. That equates to about eighty-three thousand dollars on that one point eight percent. Admin is at fifty-six percent, which is about six percent over budget, as of December thirty-first, but part of that has to do with the fact that we allocated some funds for the lot development fee up near Valley Hill and the Ashley property. All of that, almost nine five percent of that has been spent. And the same with our property tax, although we have to pay for our tax law, that's been spent at a hundred percent. And when you front off those expenses on water lineups, it kind of skews your budget a little bit, so as each month goes by, that percent will begin to drop. The fire department is at forty-nine point four percent, so point six percent under budget. Parks and Recreation is at forty-seven point seven, so there again, just as they are two, two point three percent under budget as of December. Storm Works, forty-seven point three percent, and so that's two point seven percent under budget. Planning and building is at fifty-five point six, or five point six percent over budget, but so in addition to admin, there are two items that kind of skew those figures. One is the contribution we do annually to Knox Regional Development Authority, and as well as the lineup that the council approved previously for the consultant, dealing with the economic development project that we've been doing. A lot of those fees, it's been paying out at eighty-five percent so far, and because those are large lineups, that tends to skew the budget a little bit. When you don't include that, then planning, as the cases of admin, would add a little bit of. Capitalized budget, which is our major items, vehicles and such, so far sixty-one point nine percent has been spent, and that's only because case cars haven't come in, I think there's a lot of vehicles that have been ordered, not that many, but that's sixty, sixty-one point nine percent. So the general fund as a whole of expenses, when you put all the margins, is at forty-seven point two percent, so that's two point eight percent under budget. Two point eight percent under on the expense, and then, as I said earlier, revenue, two point three over, so we need to do together at least through half the budget cycle, I think, since it's quite low. Stormwater on the expense side, the printout you have is gonna reflect basically thirty-four point eight percent spent, which, which is fifteen percent under budget, but again, like, there are no expenses coming out of the tunnel bill, or the tunnel on thirty-one W, that's a five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar expense, so we don't include that. Stormwater is at fifty-two percent spent, so about two point seven percent over budget. So that's our second.
So, any questions?
I'll let your comment tomorrow, if you would, if I see you.
Honestly, I'm envious, I guess, of your, 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 your.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay.
Lot of numbers, sorry. (Inaudible)
Overall.
Six-month review, thank you for pushing through.
Overall, that's, I'm abstaining.
(Inaudible)
All right, next, I'd like to ask Mr. General, General Iacocca to come up.
I had a real quick change. Last month, you were talking on Elizabeth Town, and General Iacocca, she came to see me, and I asked him if he could hold off until January, because I said, well, let's get to our Christmas and all that kind of stuff, and I said, I'd love for you to come and speak to us in January, so I know some people ask, why didn't you come talk to us last month? So it's not your fault, it was my fault, 'cause I put you off, so, but we're glad you're here, Knox Regional Development Alliance. I've actually got to know General Iacocca very, very closely over the last couple of years, I guess, really over the past year, and it was funny, because when you were down in Elizabeth Town, I believe, and I'm gonna say Councilman, Marty, fault yourself, I swear, as you're asking me, but he said something about me being a lot of your photos, and I said, because we've actually been working very closely together, and we've been in the Pentagon together, we've been to D C together, we've had a number of things, and I just wanna reassure the council that the money that's being spent on those organizations hasn't really done things that I believe has helped the community, and I don't say anything, I don't, I'd say it to people in here, but even with the Red Law Project, you've been very hands-on, anytime you called for me, anytime you needed to travel, you was always on the road, so I wanna thank you for that, but then kind of having you here to share why this is important to our community.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and, 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 Council. If you would, there's a K R D A folder on the left side of the folder, which you opened up the slides, and I'll use that, 'cause I talked today, and on the right side of the folder is our case for support, that provides a little bit of information, a bit additional we're gonna talk about today, but I don't want you to be on the top of that, the arm on the slide, and then underneath that case for support is a list of all the supporters of the Knox Regional Development Alliance. Again, thank you all for your time to be here today, and tell you a little bit about the Knox Regional Development Alliance. We have, the community has graciously funded us from twenty sixteen, twenty twenty, so they're funding us this year, and we were beginning our capital campaign at the end of this month to fund the organization from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, and so I have a long here today to talk about twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, but, you know, as the mayor, I mentioned, I also wanna thank you for your generous support and care you did to this point. On the first sheet, on the, the second slide, the key objectives, when the organization is founded, who have founded, three main purposes, that's to protect the missions that are for Knox and advocate three visions that makes sense for Fort Knox and its current, its current orientation. Also to expand, to expand contractor spending and presence in, in the region, and create more, maybe for public, private, public partnerships, and we've been working with, with Mayor Paul on some of those. But one of the other things, and like to those other objectives, is to advocate for the community with, with political leadership and leaders depending on, and I go up to D C, I'm here three times a year, and I'll go again in February to, to talk about some things for the region. And as a retired soldier, I feel it's necessary to do, we can't help soldiers and families as, as they transition on a grid, I think, in this area of the community. You turn the page, you know, why Fort Knox matters, if you look at the impact that Fort Knox adds on the region, it's pretty incredible, two point six billion dollars. Now, you know, truth be told, you know, not all of that two point six billion dollars stays here in the community, based on the nature of the missions that are on Fort Knox. A lot of those contract dollars come through Fort Knox, but they support organizations around the world. But on the next circle here, seven hundred and fifty million dollars of payroll does stay, like you, in the community through military payroll and civilian payroll. Supports twenty-two thousand John F. al posts and thirteen thousand jobs off posts, which is supported by Fort Knox presence. To hit Fort Knox by the numbers, about twelve thousand soldiers are working on Fort Knox, and over ninety thousand civilians, that's, you know, most posts don't have what's almost equity along military and civilian strength, but based on the organization that are in Fort Knox, that are, that are pretty heavy, which turns out to be a big thing for the community, because those civilians tend to live off posts, and it's in the communities. And you can see the number of family members, a point five of family members call Fort Knox on every day, and then over fifty-six thousand veterans in the community. Next slide, I just wanna talk a little bit, a few things about Fort Knox. It's a hundred and ninety thousand papers of armed military training with some new, really unique ranges, nearly three hundred and sixty degree river range in the country. So the Navy comes here, the butter army units from, from across the country will come here, the Coast Guard comes here, they train on the Salt River on Fort Knox, because that three hundred and sixty degree river range allows them to acquire their weapons, you know, a full circle of that capability, and they're not supposed to have. The digital aerial ground integration range that is being built on, on John F. range, fifty-two million dollar project, will bring maneuver units here from up and down the east coast to train on, on that range, which would be one of only two on an army installation in the country. The one here that'll be finished in Knox, probably two thousand, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and then one in Fort Bliss. And Fort Knox is the third most used range complex in the Army inventory, so why does all that matter? That matters because it elevates the strategic importance of Fort Knox to the Department of Defense, to have those unique capabilities that aren't found in any other organization in Fort Knox. On the off-the-grid security, Fort Knox is the only installation in the Department of Defense that can take itself off the grid, and support itself independently based on natural gas reserves, and that matters because that's, it's kept a data center here at Fort Knox, there's a major data center at Fort Knox, and it's also something that we can talk about to potentially bring the emissions to Fort Knox. So why K R D A? Of course, Mayor mentioned, we go to the Association of Defense Communities, conventions or conferences together, so there are other communities like Fort Knox that have defense community organizations like K R D A, who all compete for limited resources across the Department of Defense. The advantage of having K R D A is we compete well with those other communities based on some of the strengths that Fort Knox has, but, you know, what, what helps us is we're a resource, we're aware, and we are ready, we are proactive, we engage every day with Fort Knox with our political leadership in D C, with the military leadership in, in the Pentagon. We are singularly focused on Fort Knox and its impact to this community. And again, we meet with those leaders.
Hands up.
We keep Fort Knox top of mind with, with our, our military and civilian leadership. And with that, we expand our reach and we cover multiple events, and many, many times when it was just being an organization, I'd wanna do, if there were two meetings, I'd wanna make one, and how about recover ourselves. But again, you know, I talked about promoting Fort Knox and being in D C a couple times, two, three times a year. On the next slide, foster partnerships, the Code of Academy, that we're working with E C T C, we've been very successful with this community, E C T C's really, we, we gave them the need, everyone, we all developed this program, to help fill IT positions on Fort Knox, which is one of the things that, that when I called the, the Office of the Secretary of Defense, they're concerned about the strength that the workforce at Knox, but this can go a long way to fix that in our relationship with Kentucky Commission on Military Affairs and things around the state. As many of you know, you've seen me speak, that, you know, Beth and I connect the community with multiple venues across the community, and we help connect Knox, the quickest leaders, and help host the, the loving ceremony for Colonel King, and of course, we also give the event for Colonel or General Famas, when he was in there. And, you know, raising the region's profile, and great merit of the defense community, we were able to do a lot of, a lot of speaking about the region based on that. But one of the things that eventually helped us and helped the community is with establishing the Knox Regional Development Alliance. When Senator McConnell was running Secretary of Defense in Esper here, the McConnell scholars, he asked K R D A to host an event for our members to be able to hear directly from Secretary Esper and Senator McConnell, and it was K R D A and, and you about R O T C that were the only one of the guests, and that was because you would all host it. And raising the region's profile, getting our association with A B C, you know, we ran an article in the National Magazine that profiled the, the amount of wall that, that this community has built, and it's in the candidate list, and it shows, it allows us to profile figures of, of the reading, and it would add up all the questions that you may have.
Well, we were just discussing the budget. What do you foresee as your budget to make? Maybe you want, and you, I don't wanna say make it, but for a while.
With the overall? Yeah, so with, when we looked at, at our budget in the first, historical factors and what would be in the year of base re-alignment closure, if one were to come, it's not gonna happen this year for sure, I don't see one in twenty twenty-one, beyond that, I can't tell, but, you know, I don't think there's a lot of potential for a grant to base re-alignment closure, but having looked at that, the organization to operate and to be able to fund the, the studies, the research, and hire the consultants that we need for a grant, and that's the year that, that we fund, is four hundred and fifty thousand a year for the organization. And, you know, it's spread across multiple communities, multiple counties for, for, for that. And that's, it's listed in the case for supporters.
You mentioned the, the Code of Academy with the D C T C, which, I'm like, is seventeen weeks, seventeen quarters?
Yes, seventeen weeks, sixteen, seventeen weeks.
And that's getting ready to start in February?
No, starting February, yes.
Okay, and you're taking, do you have a capacity on how many people you're gonna take?
So, E C T C sets the capacity for the class at about twenty-five, and right now, there's nine that are actually enrolled in the course, and there's probably another twenty-five or so that are looking to compete, there's an event in Nelson County next week, you can talk with their schools to, to bring them on. Now, what's nice about what E C T C's doing is they're really, they're setting students up for success, they're looking at the students before they even admit, pass a series of tests to ensure that they have the propensity to complete the course, but also a quick little background check to make sure that we don't let somebody in the course who can't get a security clearance, because they can't work in the IT field or post for a contractor or a civilian job on post without a security clearance, and so we don't want to admit anybody in the course that we know from the start can't get a security clearance. And again, they may not be able to, but we're gonna pre-screw the most, most that have. The twenty-five is about what they're doing, they're in debt, and they wanna, they have more than that for an internship in the class, but they want to select the most, the twenty-five, most competitive students for who are ready. That is, so. Yeah, yeah, thank you. What's on the folder? I'm sorry, what's on the folder? So, the, 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 three things I'm looking to certify there right now, and just background, having an associate's or bachelor's or master's in computer science definitely fills a need in the contractors and G S positions, then the people who are credentialed certify in Java, dot net, and C plus, C plus, those are the three things that we're focusing on now. So they, they, somebody should be able to get credentialed and all three of them, but even just taking the one, they'll be able to get in Fort Knox, and get a lot of a job. I mentioned Charlie.
Is that with the E C T, is that just brand new students, or, or have you gone back to?
So.
To get this, or what are they looking for?
Yeah, so, it's really, they're marketing a lot to high schools, because of the market, the pipeline that you're building there, but it's open to anybody that has the propensity to, to, to.
Basically, you have, that, that, I don't wanna be giving background coding.
You don't, not necessarily background coding, they'll give you tests to see if you have the ability to show a strong math background, most helpful, but, you know, you understand coding, you're humble, but, I don't know, the best for.
Yeah, General Iacocca and myself, several other have done a, a project, I mean, I've gone, maybe we get to the end and just never, never, never managed, we've lived a lifetime of effort, put into that, probably at least two years between us, so sometimes you work on a project and it'll, it'll come through and.
But this is one that came through.
This is one that came.
This is one of the success stories.
I really appreciate partnership with, I really need to be Dr. Page and his team all, all the credit, I mean, I really, Dr. Page and I have talked for, for many, well, since he's been here and I've been at the job, almost about the same time, two years, talking about the needs of Fort Knox, and this is just one of the things that we talked about, he goes, I think I can help you. So he and I sat down, had a strategy session, and then when, when Beth came on board, one of those things, so Beth has been, been going in and has been our player behind this with the interest, so. Very good with the E C T C, set up the point, and he's done wonderful.
He gave the spouses the opportunity to go.
Spouses, as well, well, they, especially when they're working with, you know, the other.
I think you can, to give us enough data already for, it would, what we contribute, now we have one of your largest contributors, do you see an increase need from the city Bradcliffe, or, have you gone elsewhere?
No, I, I, I think, so, we have always, at this point, the only people that we have sought commitments from the board, whenever we talk to the board, to go and do the capital campaign kickoff on the twenty-nine, and the board's committed, most of them at the same level that they were before, not everyone at the same level that, that they were before, but I think based on us expanding the reach of, to new investors across the community who think that if Bradcliffe continued at, at the current level, we would be more ready. So I don't see, I don't see a need to increase, you know, you, you are one of our top investors, and your generosity is most appreciated. But.
If you wanna give us more, I'll do it.
No. Mayor, I should go the other way.
We're grateful for, for.
I think you did a lot to expect a lot in return. And we've been getting that so far, so it's all good.
So always turn the mayor's phone off.
Yeah.
Even all weekend.
We have time for that now.
All right, if nothing else, like, you don't have to say the rest of your, that's up to you, yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Toby, before you come up, real quick, we're gonna take just a, a second break, Tim, we've had a couple, we could put them on our table. Do you wanna try to turn that long ways, to see if you flip it this way, to see if that will open up that, that film, 'cause right now, all you have is me and Ed in that frame.
You tried.
Long ways, go and try and take a little break here, and there's.
Good?
Okay. All right, sorry about the interruption, we just needed to try to correct the, the camera. So, I got Toby up here, asked Toby to come and give you all kind of an update of where we are on November eleventh, about early April, the mayor rolled several projects that really needed to be completed, and so at that time, we asked FEMA for an extension until December, with the assumption we would get all the restoration and, and all the dirt moving done on the alternate basin by, by September, and we did. Unfortunately, in FEMA's long duration. Unfortunately, in FEMA's long duration. Smoke, actuated valves. But the guys that program that, they don't like to come in but one time. They, they charge you a huge fee to come in and set them all up and program and calibrate them. And by our bid, we got one, one setup, setup for that. The good news is we're, we'll have all that completed, and I think we got about every project that was, that we got, you know, the North Park Pyramid, Meadow Lake, Winter Green, we got some restoration due over there. The Blackjack, South Wilson, all the, all the projects the mayor laid out this year, we got those done, and the alternate basin. And we got the road built at, for Bourbon, Bourbon Trail done before they opened, had the grand opening. So weather has kind of cooperated, and we've had a good year, so. But that's where we stand on that. I've got a few other updates. I'll give that, and then you open up a question. At four o'clock today, I got, the mayor don't even know, I just got this off my email, because I asked her this morning, when the mayor asked me, or writes in for me, I need to be here. So I asked her what to, give me an update on the Happy Valley Walking Tunnel. And just, like I said, about four o'clock, she emailed the, the actual M O A for that, so that had just been approved. Or at least the design proportion of it had been approved. Yeah.
Ben, you heard him say I didn't know about that until four. I lied to Ben then at 1:30.
No, I literally just, I went back up and copied off my email that I received, that's where I left a few minutes ago. So it's, it's approved the funding of the design of it. Once they get the design, they get that approved, allocate or approve the actual construction dollars. And I'm assuming it was held up for a long, extended period of time with the transition of the governorship and those things. Any questions?
You said on pyramid, are we going to do some more work on that pyramid?
Have you seen it the last couple of days?
No.
Drive, drive, yeah, we've.
Third episode, right?
Yeah, we've completed, all the, all the driveway pipes were put in, hopefully. And we do a lot of things based on weather. You know, when it's muddy, we can't work. We, we save the roadside work in, in the hopes of keeping my guys busy all the time. We can do roadside work, and we can do driveways and do driveway pipes the day after it rains. And a lot of things we can't do till it's been dry four or five days, and even sometimes six or seven days. And so when you see it's kind of spread out, I know it's frustrating sometimes to know why this is still lingering over there, but that's, the north part, even the property owners over there ask the same thing. Of course, when we put the main part in, I told all of them it'd be several months before we come back.
And then across the street, when the, between the cemetery and the harbor, are we doing anything else there?
The design on that is about 85% complete, and I spoke to Mr. Keith, and he was all for the project. I just got to get the, we need about an acre or so from him. He wants to get it appraised. We either use Pierce, a bomb gardener, and we agreed on that. And once we get the appraisal, we'll go forward with that. But yeah, we're about, the design is, is only 85%. It could have been 100%. He, he agreed, but the layout, because we, most of the property we need is coming from him. And when he looked at it, he, he thought everything looked good, just wanted to get it appraised. So hopefully next month, we'll get that appraised and get that sent to him and see whether he agrees with the appraised value. And I'm assuming that we'll budget that and proceed on with it.
What if we don't agree with the appraised value?
What's that?
What if we don't agree with the appraised value?
I guess we can choose not to do the project would be. What do you mean? If we think it's too high? Yeah. Gets a little trickier there, you know, even if we decide to, you know, pursue the other way, you know, I mean, you know, in the worst case scenario, if we, if he didn't want to sell and we wanted to go to court, I mean, you got to have an appraised value then, so.
How about before we do that, let's see what the appraised value is. And then. Let's do that.
Yeah. My understanding is the appraised value should be based on how it's zoned. He hasn't plotted it and hasn't turned it into a, into a cemetery yet. So the appraised value should be based on what it is now. In common, common practice, that's the way it would occur. I've had, I've had it in the past, you know, 15, 20 years ago in Louisville, they don't, you know, had the same issue. But cemeteries can be pretty expensive to buy if they're already plotted out into sites.
Yeah, this area is a little low, so.
Yeah, so I mean, he, he knows how it is. He just bought it and everything looks good, and he, I think he knows the value of the prod, you know, the, the project. And the only thing he asked was if, you know, when we build it, that we keep it mowed, you know, because it's bio cemetery. You know, that's the only concern he really has, is the maintenance of it afterwards.
We're talking a small project, I may have lost attention to the mayor, which pipe, maybe it's like on woodland, and now it's going to be made of falls, this has a compromise with that.
Yeah, we've still got that on the list, and, you know, we have a retired contractor that helps us out sometimes, and, and he helped us till the, the first of November till he took fishing time to come. And, you know, that was, that was on his, actually, that one, one other small one, that was his next two projects to do, was to do those two. We were two crews for a long time to get more done, and.
When you say two crews, you're talking about six people.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
And no, not any more people, we just kind of split them to, to make them more efficient, utilize the equipment better.
So we hit Meadow Lake and Parkway, I'm sorry, Parkway, no, Park, North Park.
And those two, two large projects as far as material wise especially, you know, so.
No, Meadow Lake is still, it's, it's.
Meadow Lake is complete as far as the insulation, the restoration. It started raining, you know, another week or so of dry weather, we could have got it, but all the pipe and, and outlet structure, we're going to extend the pipe on the down, down, downhill side, I think it's on Winter Green down there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't look pretty.
Took out several ditches between the houses and cover. But there's still a couple of small things we got to go back on, but those are small areas that we have to address. And then we got, I was out there today, of course. There's still several, one of Kim's talking about, so we still have several, but I mean, it's a small, we've got five people running now, so.
Yeah, the, the project we got, you know, with North Park, that was major and huge and a lot of material. Blackjack, the rear yard, they turned out really good. That was a pretty good sized project.
I'll leave a little crow because I got, I got on with Toby about looking from a project to a project to another project, and I asked him why this project wasn't done, and I got a little yelled, I got a little mad at him. And he, he said the school wants this project done on Parkway before the school buses and every, all the kids start coming in. Of course, I didn't think about that, I was wondering why we didn't finish this project over here. So it made a lot of sense, and they, so they, they kind of left two projects to go over there and get that done before school started, which then they had to go back and finish those other projects, so. They've been working pretty hard to get these, these things done, so. And it looked good, it turned out, and I guess it's, it's all the water, I can see any water out there the other day. I mean, it's flooded.
Judging from the people on the roadway, it's, it's, they love. I haven't been over there during the rain yet, but.
That was over Saturday.
The second guy on the right said it was, as yesterday, that rain over the weekend is the first time in 25 years he's seen it flow. I don't, he's lived there 40 years. Mr. Prather, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Toby. Thank you. I did walk off.
All right, next, real quick, I want to just touch on city form, it's kind of something that I, I had actually wanted to talk about. Kind of taken back over the past couple of years, even when I was in the first term, I think it's important that our, our community knows who our leadership people are here in our community. And, you know, over the first six months, as I shared with the editorial board this morning, you know, that's, that belongs to my predecessor, but we still have to manage that. And you all, as councilmen, the body, have to make sure that I'm managing that to your, what you all hope to see happen to that approved budget that you all had. And so kind of going through our next year budget, looking at everything, I guess just taking a perspective and looking at things, how we work towards getting ourselves more communication with the citizens and kind of having them know who their contact people are, or if they have an issue, or sometimes they call our office because that's the first thing they think of, is call the mayor's office. So kind of with that thought process, I thought it would be nice. We have the marriage breakfast coming up on the 25th of this month, and I thought, well, maybe too soon. So the week of February, and what we're looking for, and I'll give you an exact date whenever this hits, is going to be probably sometime in the week, I can't do it that week, so we're going to change it, it's probably the week of the 17th. So we can't do the For Love for Radcliffe like we talked about, Ben, I've changed name. But the week of the 17th, probably on the February 20th is probably what I'm looking at, we're going to do a 5:30 to 7:30 meeting, where we're inviting the public and the community to come in, and each department head will have its own table and own area for citizens to come in and either meet them, talk to them, express concern, you know, maybe something with the police department, maybe an issue that they'd like to address with the fire department, but actually have an opportunity to sit down with the leaderships in each of these departments. Myself and Asher will be there, the council will be welcome to come and attend, and have an area if you want to just, you know, meet and greet with people. I'll probably do a little forum at the beginning, a little opening, but we want to give the citizens an opportunity to know who our, our leadership is and who some of the, the people that are running the city on a daily basis are. So that's kind of the thought, you know, thought process behind it. And so February 20th at 5:30, we'll do that, and I'm sure the paper will probably put something out for us, and we'll share it on social media so until the Thursday. Ed told me never to do nothing on a Wednesday. So.
Or Friday.
We can still keep it at the level of Radcliffe, but I, one of the things that I've noticed working at City Council right now is that most people don't know what any of us do from your job, our job, the department has this really, they don't know part two, but they do. So, and I, and I say that they may know police and fire, but they may be a little fuzzy on public works, maybe fuzzy on planning a zone and who does what. So maybe like beforehand, do some sort of alert to let them know, okay, this is what this department does, so when you do come to the forum, you'll have an idea of what to ask, or who to ask the question for. Because I've noticed that people are, well, don't you do this, or don't you do that? I'm like, no, why don't they do that? Sometimes they're just a little fuzzy on the job description itself. So as you're presenting it, just so they'll be able to know how to frame the questions.
Yeah, and with you, you're kind of a social media as well junkie. We, one of the things we're planning over the next, leading up, each one of the department heads, I'm doing an interview with them, and they're actually sitting there, and I'm asking them a minute questions, you know, just, you know, how long have you worked for the city, how long have you been here, what is your job entail? And those videos will be in our Facebook page over the next week leading up to that. And so that is something we're doing, and that's, yeah. We would have done one today, but some things came at us, and it took, we didn't able to get the one I started with today, so, but that is part of what we're doing. But that's kind of the hope and intent of having something like this, is the public's able to come in, and that way when someone like Miss Cross this morning has to complain about her trees, as we talked about, she's able to know that Jeff Hackett's office is 351, 8150, and she can call and report that to him rather than calling Ashley and reporting that it hurt herself. Yep. So that's what we're, that's what that forum is going to be about.
I think you do know they're going to ask us what else could we do in the city to make it better? So maybe like a comprehensive, not a comprehensive, just like an engagement something, what would you like to see in the city?
Yeah, like a little, yeah. Yeah, a little, what do you call it, a little box to drop in? Suggestion box, there you go. Yeah. Then before we go into mayor council comments, Tim, will you wind that one up? Well, we can take with this, I can deal with this one, that's fine. Just wind that one up, let me have it, I'll pass that down to you, Barbara, kind of set that aside, that way if you have a capacity. Just commend everybody that decided to run again. I think we have 13 that are filed, I got, you have 13 that are filed. And so those that decided to run, and Ed.
Sir?
I know you decided to pass this year, but we appreciate your commitment to this council. How many years? 10 years? I was 30 when you started. We started together, didn't we? Yeah, we did. So thank you for your commitment, and I'm sure that we will enjoy you for the next year and appreciate your, your, you being on this council. Barbara?
The only thing I have is if Mr. Jeffries can help me with it, because I didn't, I didn't bring my paper, I don't remember. We have a health fair coming up and a blood drive, this Saturday, the 18th. Yes, from 9 to 2 this Saturday, I was still in February looking at that other date, I knew what was showing was not the right date. But if everybody can come out and you can donate blood and get some welfare checks, I mean, like your blood pressure screenings and those type of things. So it's usually a good turnout. That's all I have.
Okay, well, on behalf of the Radcliffe Small Business Alliance tomorrow, our general membership meeting is going to consist of the three mayors from our course, each town and by growth, so please come out and join us tomorrow here at Colton Community Center to see what our three mayors have to say. We also have a ribbon cutting, if my husband will cooperate. 31, 2, council group will be having a ribbon cutting on Saturday, which is over here on Woodland. Okay, let me see if I can find ours.
The doctors?
On 11 North Woodland, yes.
The doctors?
So. Pardon me? Doctor Look's office, but there's a different doctor in there, it's a, it's doctors, is the name.
You want to say that in my?
Um, first and foremost, definitely would like to thank the entire community, including, um, mayor and entire city council, for a wonderful holiday Christmas dinner, um, this past Christmas day, it was amazing, uh, thank communities enterprise, it was wonderful, the mayor came, did an awesome job. We had a ball, we served a little, uh, one-seventy pot, and it was just absolutely, just warmed my heart that day. Uh, we had toys for tots, we had music, we had tons of food, thank you, um, councilman, uh, Kim and councilwoman Pam for stopping by on your way out, thank, thank you all for your contributions, uh, we had tons of food, and they all enjoyed themselves immensely, so we did it without help of everyone in the community, showing love for that. So that was the first thing, um, next thing, excuse me, January thirtieth, the entrepreneurship academy will be kicking off its second year, we're gonna have the kickoff because we gained a new partner with, um, E C T C this year, so we will be holding it at the Morrison Gallery, which is at the James Owens Building at E C T C on January thirtieth at six P M. You'll see the highlights of what to expect for the upcoming entrepreneurship academy, uh, this time we're gonna be focused on people who are currently in business one to five years, uh, um, how to pitch, and missions network will be in, uh, teaching on that class, franchising with, just done it in, from Chick-fil-A and countless others, it'll be a sixty course opposed to the eight months, um, starting in March, but the kickoff will be January thirtieth, and it is free and open to any public, um, doesn't matter where city you're in, it's just, you can come to those, uh, six weeks will make sure that happens. The, the, January the twentieth, probably the best mark with the community, perfect, okay, so there's tons of things going on, it's not a day off, but a day on, so, uh, the N W A C P will be hosting the annual M L K Scholarship Lunch that morning at the British Community Center. There will also be a march that will be happening here at, at right by the police department, um, and that'll start around two, one, or at one, with a program for the M L K to start at two. X, sexy, yes, and, um, I believe that's. Yes, it is, I, yeah, there you go, advantage of that. Um, last and not least, Sparrow Boxing Club just opened, ran open this past Saturday, we now have an opportunity for our kids to take advantage of, the place is amazing, and I think that was the largest event of ever seen, any grand opening ever, uh, but primarily, it was well over a hundred plus kids with no cell phones, TVs, and they were actively engaged in the process, so, um, as a community, just if you haven't had a chance to go by, please talk to the Sparrow, go by the Boxing Club, it is absolutely amazing, so, and that's all.
Just wanna reiterate, the mayor's breakfast is the tenth annual, um, it is on January twenty-fifth at nine to eleven, the Colvin Community Center, uh, if you're looking to participate, uh, please contact, uh, three-five-one, uh, four-zero-seven-nine, or three-five-one, or two-seven-zero, three-five-one, uh, six-four-seven-seven, uh, and you can, uh, reach either Ash or Tim. Then, uh, the other thing we've got, if you're looking for prizes, still, we're taking those in, and if you wanna be a part of that, again, tenth annual mayor's breakfast, January twenty-fifth, uh, right there at Colvin Community Center, and so with that, if we have nothing else, um, if. A Saturday night, yeah. And I bet for those, they're fun. I did, I responded. Yeah, I thought I did, I may not say it, but, uh, what councilman Yates, actually didn't have the mic, that's January twenty-fifth at six P M, North Harden High School Baseball, fundraiser, and tickets are twenty-five dollars, that includes your meal, and then, uh, there'd be a live auction, Kentucky Pork Producer, and there's a live, uh, auction after that, uh, by Senator Dennis Perry, so. All right, if there's nothing else, meeting will be, uh, January twenty-first at six-thirty here at Colvin Community Center, and, uh, I'm trying to think if we have anything on the, well, I'll get out to you whatever we have on the agenda.